Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this July 19th Committee of the Whole. We're gonna actually need to have a roll call to establish a quorum, make sure that everyone's physically present. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikael.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
Beniziano.
Here.
Basassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sanica.
Here.
With six present, I understand that there is a quorum this evening and I also understand that Alderman O'Brien is prevented from attending tonight's meeting as a result of an employment conflict and he's requested to attend the meeting remotely pursuant to Section 2-114 of the City Code. So as such at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to permit Alderman O'Brien to attend this evening's meeting remotely. Is there such a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Reyes, for the second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sanica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Alderman here are essentially working in a volunteer capacity and that is why we have employment as one of the reasons in our ordinances to join remotely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
It's gonna be pretty irritating if he's perky.[262.02][262.02](Laughter)
I'll try to keep my perkyness down while I'm...
We can mute him.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikael.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, Alderman O'Brien is permitted to attend this evening's committee of the whole remotely. Alderman O'Brien, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody come through loud and clear.
All right.
Don't worry for saying that way too.
Okay, thank you. And before we get started with the agenda, I understand there are five items on this evening's agenda, four items, excuse me, four items. Just want to remind everyone that the floor will be open to the audience for 20 minutes to address the City Council on matters that are specifically on this evening's agenda after the City Council has discussed the items with staff. We ask that anyone wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length and comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and profanity will not be tolerated or accepted in any form. Now moving on to the first item here, the first one we have is gonna be deferred to Manager Sabo for the emergency backup generator for the Public Works Building at 3900 Birdnik.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. I will jump right into it. The presentation tonight is to seek council support with the proposed purchase of a generator, emergency backup generator for the Public Works facility. As everyone knows, since at least my arrival to the organization and long before it, emergency preparedness has been very much a core priority for the work that we are doing. Emergencies are the operational component of municipal government that you hope happens least often, but certainly highlights when you are ready and prepared and also brings to light those moments when you're not. And as we evaluate our facilities and training and all of the different components that goes into emergency management, Public Works is very much a part of the first responder element of a municipal operation and accordingly, having power and capabilities when there is a storm or major natural disaster that requires a large-scale response from our municipal government is crucial to our core operations. The Public Works facility is a core emergency response facility. We store most of our heavy equipment and vehicles which we use in an emergency response. We utilize that facility for fueling as well as vehicle and equipment maintenance. We also have our SCADA and water systems over at the facility and communications is very much an important part of our emergency response. Typically, in an emergency, time is of the essence and when we are competing for scarce resources, if there is a large-scale natural disaster, so too are other communities as well as private sector entities. Therefore, sometimes working and trying to find and source materials or supplies, equipment is pretty difficult when you are working in an emergency response and certainly time is of the essence. Also, I also want to note that with this decision and how staff is approaching this, much of this is planning for tomorrow, knowing that the circumstances surrounding the Arlington Park redevelopment may bring additional traffic and economic development and resident base into our community looking forward. Certainly, that also brings to the responsibility to the organization to make sure that we are ready and able to respond to any sort of emergency, large-scale or small, if it were to unfortunately occur. Currently, in the event of a power outage, the process is very much manual. At the moment, we are manually accessing the emergency response equipment. So in the event of an outage, our team has to go to the Public Works facility, manually open a door. There's 22 different doors that basically do not function on openers, don't have backup, that have to manually be opened. And the response vehicles and equipments have to be pulled out of the facility. So there's a trailer and trucks that we use to go over to Park Central, the shared park district slash Public Works facility on Central Road. And from there, we transport two portable generators back to the Public Works facility. Once those get back there, we have to use various extension cords to plug them into our circuitry, which then powers only a portion of our Public Works facility. What that means is that we have staff who are tied down and taken away from the emergency response components, having to truck over vehicles to one facility, truck back portable generators, supervise those generators as well as the fuel and ventilation around them, which pulls away personnel from our emergency response. Here's a picture of one of the doors that leads to the main storage area within Public Works. This is the door. As you can tell, that we would have to manually open, there's a pull chain, but to get this door open, multiple employees have to get under and get lifted and then pull that up. Furthermore, the door is deactivated from the actual opening mechanism, so your hope is that it stays up the entire time that you're moving in and out of the facility as it's not necessarily supported by the actual lifting mechanism, the mechanical garage door opener. The staff report did identify a number of different risks that staff have gone through when evaluating the current setup versus the proposed. Certainly, we've identified various potential injury risks and this is a part of our general evaluation of operations. Emergencies don't strike when it's convenient. They tend to happen at inopportune times, such as in the middle of a major storm or in the middle of the evening. That said, our team has to go into a facility that has heavy equipment, sharp and dangerous materials and tools, as well as large vehicles, and utilize various flashlights and other lighting components to get to the equipment and get it out, get the facility powered. In addition, we lose hot water, so in an emergency response, our team is typically encountering sewage, chemicals and contaminants. And in accordance with OSHA, we're required to be providing lukewarm or hot water in the event of any sort of exposures. Building equipment loss risks, so we don't have a functional fire protection system in the event of an outage, which is a pretty critical component to our building, especially in the event of we're dealing with any sort of lightning storms. Lack of air conditioning and heat, delayed emergency response due to employees allocating their time to getting the power. There's also the potential that there is a natural disaster that makes it, we are unable to get to that generator or the generator not working. The newest generator that we own is 22 years old. And so as we continue to maintain it, we do power it up and make sure that it is functional, but certainly it is reaching a point where we may need to consider whether replacing that is the best use of our funds. One of the big components to this is the servicing of emergency vehicles. So as we are responding to various events, again, we're dealing with various conditions. Vehicles break down and so as we are responding to those events, we have mechanics typically on call or present to be able to service those vehicles and equipment. Telephone network and internet go down, security door, excuse me, facility security and door access systems are also tied into our electric system. I do want to note that the SCADA and water management system does have a battery backup tied to it, so there is short-term extra supply that's provided in that system. However, in an extended outage scenario, that short-term battery may expire and that's certainly something that we're looking at as well. We're joined this evening by Mick Fleming. He is the Director of the Joint Emergency Management System, also known as GEMS, which is a consortium of communities here in the Northwest suburbs, typically a part of the Northwest Central Dispatch System, who band together and work on our emergency plans and continuity of operations planning. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to invite Mick to make a few comments also related to Public Works and the emergency services component.
Yeah, please, Mick.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for giving me a few minutes of your time. So like Mr. Sabo said, my job is disaster preparedness. What we've seen in the, a big push from the Department of Homeland Security and from FEMA in the last few years and more and more an emphasis on Public Works and Public Works facilities being, first off, first responder facilities, but also critical public safety infrastructure. And there's been a bigger push in hardening and making those types of facilities more resilient in the event of a natural disaster or some sort of an intentional act. Like our police and fire, we rely very heavily on our Public Works, as exemplified in this presentation, to support our response and recovery to any number of disasters. A lot of our planning that we do in our emergency operations plan and continuity of operations plan is built on the premise that we'll have a quick and rapid response from Public Works and the other departments, but a lot of it on Public Works because they support so many other components of what our departments do so that we can continue to do response and recovery operations. And like was mentioned, you know, in the immediate response, we're looking at Public Works for things like clearing storm debris, clearing paths for responding vehicles and severe winter weather incidents, repairing water mains, support to our impacted emergency vehicles, which a big one is supporting the fuel side of it, so our fuel pumps and being able to service those so that they can continue to operate. In the end, it is a critical component to making sure that we have a timely and efficient response to the life safety needs of the residents to have these facilities readily available and functioning to support our operations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mick. Couple more pieces of information for the council's info. FY22 includes a budget for this procurement of $325,000. Our vendor inquiries that we've done have suggested that we potentially can get the project done closer to the $250,000 range. We recently went through a grant application process. However, we were not awarded that grant. That said, if the project were to proceed, we've consulted with both Mick as well as the city's grant consultant, that we can continue to pursue grant opportunities even if the project were to be underway. To wrap up, staff is recommending that the city do move forward with the procurement of a generator for the Public Works facility. And this evening, we seek council support to proceed with that budgeting purchase. If support is provided this evening, our staff will begin with the formal procurement process and ultimately, the final purchase and contract will come back to the City Council for approval at a regular City Council meeting via resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain a discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you, Manager Sabo. Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Before we get into questions or discussions, it does mention in the packet that the fiscal year 2022 budget identifies up to $325,000 available for this and preliminary inquiries, $250,000 to execute the actual project. The $325,000, if that was to not be applied here, where is the value other than staying in the budget? What other aspects of this?
Specific to FY22, if I'm understanding the question correctly, it's what is the trade-off? If we don't do this, what other projects can we ultimately complete? Certainly, I think it's within the council's policy directive, you know, if you don't expend the funds this year, it remains in fund balance. So it could be repurposed into future projects, roadwork. It could be reallocated to water system maintenance and upgrades. It really is within the council's discretion as to how these funds ultimately are used. The funds right now are budgeted within FY22, given that the dollar amount is large and the amount of work that would go into finding another project matched with our supply chain that we currently are living through. It'd be difficult to find another project to reallocate those funds to at this time. But certainly, we haven't identified other projects at the moment. We certainly could if we were to not necessarily choose to move forward with the $325 for the generator.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, discussion items? Alderman Bud Matts.
I'll take a shot. Thanks. How many times has the current generator system been used in the last five years?
Interim Superintendent, or, excuse me, interim director.
I know in the last three years, it hasn't been used once, but I have had conversations with prior staff that it has been used in the last 10 to 15 years.
So in three years, we haven't used it one time? Is the $250,000 our portion of the cost or is the whole project in the Park District is sharing the cost? What about that piece?
The city and the Park District share in building expenses to the tune of about 66% and 33%, so the Park District, based on that program, would be responsible normally for 33% of the costs. I know we are having discussions about space needs and whether that situation would continue to exist. So moving forward, it might be something that we want to have a conversation with the Park District to make sure they understand that if they're paying those fees at this point, any changes in the future might result in some other balancing of those funds.
So...
The current split is 66, 33.
So am I hearing that if they were to leave the Birdnik facility and move to the other facility, they would be looking for reimbursement from us for the 33%?
I haven't talked to them specific to this or any other capital project. We currently make that split on all expenditures within the building. So I would assume that any major capital purchase, that could become a topic of conversation when we start talking to them about any type of space needs modifications to the building.
And do we know if this money is in their budget for this year and able to be able to afford their 33% of this expense?
I do know that former Director Horn and the Park District went over the budget. I don't know specifically if it's listed in their budget, but I do know that conversation occurred as part of last year's preparation for this year's budget.
Thank you. So just one comment, something that hasn't been used in three years and we're looking at spending $325,000. And then we had a bear of a time getting the money passed to do the garbage can system, which is something that's gonna get used every week. And to find that money, so it's been a difficult, historically, this has been a difficult pill for this council to swallow for this expenditure. And so I get the prudence issue and that, you know, to totally be prepared. But honestly, it's very difficult to justify spending a quarter of a million dollars for something that is probably not gonna get used in the next three years.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts.
You're done.
Alderman Sanica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the council knows, Alderman Bud Matts and myself are both members of the Capital Projects Committee. So we have had discussions about this item in the past and we have addressed some concerns since this is an item that is recurring for our budget. So I think what also might be helpful, and we have a representative from GEMS today to maybe discuss what would be the potential implications from a financial standpoint in these emergencies where, similar to maybe security infrastructure for technology, we spend a lot of money to make sure that we can prevent any malfeasance to happen to the organization because those would be catastrophic costs and so it's not really something that we think about. Is this something where we should be thinking about that as well in this situation?
I'll jump in first, if that's okay. You know, one of the considerations is looking at the generator somewhat like an insurance policy as well. Certainly, there have been workers comp claims in the events of injuries that amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars depending on the severity or the scenario related to that event. And so the risks identified typically try to, well, excuse me, not typically, they directly address some of those risks that we've identified or that staff has observed that potentially could lead to those types of expenses. Further, you know, I believe with respect to the facility security, obviously, we have a police force who's patrolling, but in an emergency event, their focuses are typically directed towards the areas of need. So the security components of the building may present, you know, an opportunity, but the likelihood of something happening there may not be that high. The fire protection component certainly is a concern in the fact that if something were to happen and we have people in the building without a fire protection system, that presents a significant threat to our personnel. So there's a variety of different scenarios that could arise that may have high dollar values in the event of loss. But again, it's kind of like you pay your liability insurance, you pay for health insurance and various other types of insurance. Your premiums may be expended and your hopes are to never have to utilize those services. Similarly, in this case, that's the perspective that staff is taking in the recommendation. I hope that answers the question, or at least is what you're asking.
It does. And since we have a resource here that deals with the entire region, if there are any examples perhaps that maybe we could speak to as well if that's happened.
So, again, if I, and I might not understand the question in its entirety, but I'm trying to relate it back to liability for not being able to provide an adequate response based on what your plans are in the more of the police and fire realm. It's rarer, and I'm trying to think of a couple of examples, and the only thing I can come back to is things like Katrina and some debris management type of scenarios where a local or county jurisdiction was responsible for their lack of speed in dealing with a situation that eventually led to an additional disaster. So not being able to clear roadways with, in an exigent circumstance, quick enough led to other people getting injured or ill is the only thing I can draw it back to. In recency, I can't think of another example related back to a PW type of response incident. But the only other thing that I can think of that comes back to mind is the water wastewater system for SCADA and the importance of having that up and running, especially high temperature or middle of winter type scenarios where that's a service or resource that is a huge life safety resource that we provide. But I can't, again, think of any recent type of examples. Does that make sense?
That does answer my question, thank you. And to provide context as well for this council, when we're thinking about the cost versus the benefit versus the risk at hand, I guess my other follow-up question then for Manager Sabo is if this is an item that could be budgeted through the American Rescue Plan Act funds?
Yes, it potentially could be utilized. The ARPA funds could be utilized for this purchase. In our evaluation of the ARPA funds, the number that was originally presented when we came before the council for coming to the whole on the water plan actually is slightly higher than the initial reported number from ARPA. So staff is currently working on coming back to the council with the ARPA recommendations and to finalize how we move forward with that. But yes, I believe the ARPA funds can be utilized for these types of purchases.
Okay, so with all that to the council, I'm curious to know how my colleagues are thinking on this issue.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Alderman Basassi, and then Alderman Mikael.
Okay, something you mentioned, you said that Public Works has to go over to the Central Road facility to get the generators, which are 22 years old. I'm wondering what the useful life of those generators currently is and are they even being used right now?
So generators run on hours, hours of usage, and typically, the more hours you use a generator, the better the generator is. And I guess the better question is to understand how many hours of usage we have on our current generators, if staff knows that.
I do not know the answer to that question.
And those generators that are over at Central, are they used right now? Are we using them for anything or are we just storing them there?
The generators right now are stored there. They're powered up at least once a year to make sure they run, to change the oil. They are taken to various facilities for external power needs. I know a lot of our water pumping stations sometimes have situations where we need supplementary power, both either inside or outside for various reasons. So I know we've used them. We've just never used them to power the Public Works facility in the recent time.
Okay, 'cause what I'm thinking is if they're not used that often, is there room to just store them at the Birdnik address?
Or would they get stored at the Birdnik address once the Park District were at Birdnik full-time and, or left?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when they leave, we'll naturally go there anyway.
Yes.
So that would then eliminate the necessity for staff to leave Birdnik, go to Central, pick up the generator and bring it back?
Yes.
And when do we anticipate the eventuality of the Park District departing from the Birdnik facility? Do we know? Do we have any...
I'm not sure of a timeline. I think right now, we're starting our space needs analysis that'll lead to some of those decisions.
And so if it was maybe three to five-year timeline, looking back historically, the past three years, we haven't had any power outages, knock on wood, luckily at this time?
So I just want to clarify, I'm not saying that we haven't had any power outages. We have...
To necessitate the use of a generator.
Because, you know, I mean, I was there during one of the power outages where the entire team was gone. Power went out. It only ended up being out for 45 minutes, but in that 45-minute time period, City Hall advised that, you know, a lot of calls didn't get through. People were trying to make calls to get emergency information about the storm and what to do and who to call, and our systems were down. So had I stayed there much longer, I probably would have, you know, made that call and implemented that system. But it was just at an awkward time of the day and the storm appeared to be passing based on all the radar that we were looking at, so power came back on.
And for the premise of this conversation, we're talking... And for the premise of this conversation, we're talking power outages that last a significant amount of time, not a one-hour time or two-hour time, this is something where we would need a generator. If it was three hours or more, I think that would be significant.
One other thing, I know if the generators are eventually stored at the Burdenick Facility because of changes in the space needs, it still would require us to take them from the location that they're stored, you know, take them around to the west side of the building where the transfer switch is located and, you know, do the necessary hookups and who knows what kind of conditions that we would be up against in trying to do, you know, put that together. It's like every other function that you do in an emergency, if you're not doing it routinely, what you need to hook up and how you need to hook it up and what things you need to power based on that emergency are different and depending on what staff you have available at the time, that could take some time just to establish the power and get it hooked up to the transfer switch to power the building.
So, maybe that could, would be helpful for my colleagues here on the council is understanding when the generator is relocated to the transfer switch, it's plugged into the transfer switch, but is there selective areas that are plugged into the transfer switch? And it's not just like you plug it into the port and the transfer switch changes it to generator power and generator power is now feeding the facility that doesn't have power?
There are, none of the generator, portable generators that we have will power the entire building.
Correct.
So, there is a default system of things that we guess is going to be important to be powered and then we would have to adjust based on the emergency and the needs at the time. You know, an event in the winter is different than an event in the summer and things that we'd have to operate doors, overhead doors when we might not need to have to do that in the summer as an example.
Yes, thank you for reminding me because I believe the last time we had this conversation, the request of having to power the vehicle lifts, for example, and then Alderman Budmats, if I can pick on you a little bit, you mentioned that during, maybe during an emergency, it's not that the time that staff would need to be working on a vehicle or what have you, but the fact, the point I'm trying to get to is if we, I know that emergencies, some are spontaneous, but others, if they're weather-related, we typically have advanced knowledge that severe weather might be rolling through in the next day or even the next two hours. Is there opportunity to have a protocol put in place that if we are having severe weather with high winds, that we will move the generator in advance and have it staged? And I don't know if this is a waste of time or if it's just proactive and it's staged and in the event it's needed, it's plugged in and the transfer switch is, the transfer switch is used to operate whatever areas of the building are necessary or do we have to invest a quarter million dollars for this insurance policy, which is better at this point?
So, I think one of the components, and again, I go back to the generator really being important in the times when we have a major emergency really roll through. So, certainly, we can project when a thunderstorm might be coming, but as recently, you know, a couple of months ago, we had tornado warnings come through that were not anticipated by the National Weather Service. So, that is the scenario in which we would have a potential long-term outage because you have comet lines that are down throughout the area and they're trying to restore to a larger scale area and the communities were not ready for that. I was at Northwest Central for that scenario.
I was in Colorado and I got alerts on my phone that severe weather was coming within the next two hours, so I'm aware, I remember that event. All right, I forgot Alderman McHale first and Alderman Beniziano.
Is there an option for a generator to just be used for the one side of the building where it would have that, the side with the, where you have the big overhead door, where all the vehicles come out, where the, you know, the offices are and everything like that? Would it be possible to do a, I don't know anything about generators, like a half a building generator to maybe save on costs of this at all?
We'd have to take a look at the circuitry layout of the building and certainly, you could get a smaller generator and focus it to specific areas, I think that is something we can look into, but again, we'd have to analyze how the circuitry and all the different runs are within the building to determine that.
Because I feel, I feel like going somewhere to get a generator, calling the person in from wherever they live to come and get the generator, to plug in the generator, to do all the things to get the generator that's on there seems not appropriate for the Public Works building personally. So, if we could look and see if maybe instead of buying a three-hundred-and-twenty or two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar generator, if maybe there's something smaller that would operate X, Y, and Z in order to be able to move forward, I think that that might be a little bit, something that I would be interested in seeing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you. So, if we were to have a main generator at Public Works, is there any other scenarios where we would need these other generators that we currently store at Central Road anywhere else within the community in the event of a natural disaster?
Yes, yeah, we would keep the generators for other purposes and still, like I mentioned earlier, our pump houses and other water facilities oftentimes do need backup generator supply.
Okay, so that was my very first instinct was that guessing that Public Works does not power the entire community in these events, that would, even if, you know, I didn't know about the pump houses since you said that, that there's other things within our community that are going to need these generators, these portable generators that we have, they're portable for a reason. I feel that our main facilities should have their own powering source, these are critical stations. I mean, in light of everything that is going on in our world today, I think that it would be very irresponsible of us not to have power at our critical places of, you know, our police and fire to get fuel. If a tornado comes through here, they're not going over to Mobile to get gas. I mean, these things have to work. We're not going to be able to pull employees from their homes because they may not be able to get here to go get generators. This is just not realistic kind of things that happen. So, I'm, you know, I'm interested in seeing what our possibilities are and maybe a smaller generator and doing, you know, smaller powering at the facility, but I think moving generators around is just not feasible and that that facility needs its own generator. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Pesessi.
I just want to get a little clarification on one of the responses to one of the other questions. Given that we have a, well, whatever it was, a sixty-six, thirty-four split or whatever it is, if we were to get this generator for our purposes and it was two-hundred, let's say it was two-hundred-and-fifty, then a third of that would, we'd be looking for compensation from the, from Park District for that or will we be buying a generator that would only provide emergency power to the certain parts of Public Works and it wouldn't necessarily affect the park being able to be used by the Park District at all?
My assumption is the Park District, like the city, will have certain emergency response and they do have equipment and things that they need to have access to at the Public Works Facility. So, much like the way we share a lot of our other capital expenses on the building, moving forward, you know, my initial assumption is that we would do that the same with this project. Whether they would seek some kind of reimbursement for that if we then split in a short period of time is something that we haven't had any conversations about.
Okay, so, in general, I agree with Alderman Beniziano that we need to have some sort of a generator or something for that facility. What I'd like to know before I could actually say, yes, let's do it, is to know, you know, a lot more what the costs are, are there lower-cost options and what the Park District is thinking about. Because if it's a simple, if it's a straight no from the Park District, does that stop us from this whole thing? Are we going to foot the whole bill? So, I'd like to know some of those unknowns before we actually could vote, but in general, I would say go forward and try and get that information.
Okay, so for you at this point, you feel you need some more gaps to be filled?
Yes.
In order to make a determination from your perspective? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
If my memory serves correctly, the, there was a transfer switch already installed for the purpose of doing what you're asking is that the critical circuits would be powered through a generator, which is how we've got to the point where we're at now where there's a portable generator that's able to be brought and there's critical circuits are being powered in that event. So, because this was brought up, I think this is about the third or fourth time in five years for me that this has been brought up. So, so, one of the responses was to do a transfer switch for part of the building, that we weren't wasting money, that we were going to be able to use that even if we ended up getting a whole building or if, in layman's terms, a whole house generator. So, but at this point, if we get a whole house generator, a whole building generator, then the Park District's offices would still be air-conditioned in the event of a power outage, so I would think that they would need to be able to pay for that as well.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Any other questions or comments, items of discussion on this before we take a straw vote?
Mr. Mayor, it's Kev, if I may?
Sure.
No, I don't want, I'm certainly in agreement with kind of seeing that we can get other support from the Park District or ARPA funds for doing that, but I agree with Alderman Beniziano as well. And I looked at it funny, I looked at it the same way Manager Sabo did, given my insurance background, I look at this as an insurance policy, is that I really don't see a need not to have it, and Alderman Budmats just said it's been discussed for five years, I remember it's been discussed for three years, I've been a member of the council, that I'm actually surprised by why we haven't done this yet is that, and I guess it is probably just more of two questions, and it might be, the first one might be just for Director Charlton or Manager Sabo, is I'm guessing these other generators that we have, twenty-two years old, like other topics we've discussed, it's probably hard to get parts on those, is that correct? Is that, we'd almost be paying through the nose or not able to get parts? Should one goes one year and we test them, not work, would that affair?
That's typically what you see in older equipment, but I honestly don't know if we've needed to try to get parts for the generator and have had trouble with the generator.
Okay, thanks. This might be for Mr. Fleming from GEMS, is, are there, because I know we always like to see what other municipalities are doing, in your experience and expertise from Manager Sabo, Director Charlton, are there other municipalities in our area, we always like to think, like Talatine, Schaumburg, Armutown area, that don't have this? Since it seems like a lot of times we'll connect ourselves with what other municipalities are doing or are we the outlier that don't already have this in place?
So, the only ones I didn't hear back from were Buffalo Grove, Barrington, Wheeling and, no, those are the only ones. Everybody else has a generator, but they're also, their facilities are either recently revised or remodeled, but yeah, almost everybody around us does.
All right, thank you. No, I'm in full support of this, obviously, any way we can defray the cost, I'd be an advocate from, but to me, it's just, I mean, everybody, I know I say this multiple times to your people, the residents I speak to live in town because of the services they receive. So, to me, I feel like we're doing a disservice to our residents in the case of a natural disaster that we're not able to get our first responders out, including Public Works gentleman and lady fair, along with police and fire. To me, this would kind of be like Chief Placler, Deputy Chief Sutter showing up on a call and, oh, we don't have the jobs of life because we only use it once a year. And you want it there when it's needed? And I don't remember when it was, I think it was in the last year or eighteen months, we were all in council chambers in the apartment. And when those storms went through and boom, thirty, forty-five seconds later, the generator kicked into City Hall, which we have, and we resumed normal operations. I wouldn't block Public Works staff trying to get plows out or tree trimming equipment out in the dark, so of course, I think we can keep the cost on, Mr. Mayor, I'm supportive, but I would be a supportive of moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Alderman O'Brien. Any other comments or questions before we take a straw vote? Okay, so the first question I'm going to ask is, raise your hands if you feel you have enough information to give guidance this evening. If you feel you have enough information to make a vote to give staff guidance on a yea or a nay, raise your hand if you feel you have enough information.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr., to respond to your question, I would, I'm not sure how to vote on this one because I would like them to go forward and get the cost and get the other information. So, I'm thinking that would be a yes, but as far as a final vote, I would not have all the information I need.
Okay, then let me ask for you, I was trying to do this primarily for you, but do you feel that if staff were to provide additional information, if the direction is given this evening to bring this up for council action during a city council meeting, that if you had the information you need specifically, you'd be able to make a decision?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then, those in favor of moving this forward for council action? Those in favor of moving this forward for council action?
Sorry, I'm sure, I'm still confused by Alderman Pesessi, so are we saving? Yeah, I apologize. Okay, so then, is this moving forward for council action with additional information based off of the discussion here?
Of course.
Thank you, okay, then yes.
Yes. Alderman O'Brien in voice, he's in favor, so.
So, my hand is up.
All right, so unanimous unless there's one opposed?
No, no, I'm just with information, yeah.
Okay, with information. All right, so we have council action or with additional information discussed from the questions asked this evening. So, we'd like you to move forward.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and move forward, we'll take the information, take a look into the different items and we'll circle back at a future date.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the next item, which is the council chamber improvements. For this, again, Manager Sabo, I believe you're going to take the stage on this one?
It's Sabo, yeah, you're going to hear it from me a bit, so. All right, on this item, the agenda packet included a memo that summarized a few different options for just improvements that are suggested for this room, a few modernization components. This council chamber is very heavily used both for public meetings in the evenings as well as by staff throughout the day. It's our only meeting room that has AV functionality, so typically, if we have any sort of presentations or using GIS, our meetings are held in here. We also meet with potential developers, contractors, residents in the council chamber, so there's a lot of foot traffic, traffic coming and going through the facility on a regular basis. The proposals and suggestions really aim to just provide some aesthetic improvements to the room as well as a few functional improvements. Some of these have really de minimis costs such as garbage can replacement, we certainly can just go get new garbage cans, but some of them do carry a bit more cost-related and certainly, our direction that we're seeking from the council this evening is, are any of these suggestions supported? And if so, before we went out and did a bunch of work, we wanted to get your feedback on the listed suggestions. If any of them are not desired, we certainly won't put any time or effort into them. And so, I've put together a PowerPoint and summarized the items that were within the memo. A big one that I've heard from a few council members on is the wood paneling in the back of the room as well as on the dais. Certainly, we could either drywall over that or remove the wood paneling, whichever is the easiest way forward if that's something that is desired, as well as another thought was to add sconces. There's two pillars on the wall in the back there with electric that runs through them, so adding on sconces is just an aesthetic component that may look nice in the back wall. Another suggestion was replacing ceiling tiles, so a number of the ceiling tiles are bowed. I don't know the exact age of the ceiling tiles, but certainly, there's an opportunity if the council desires. I'm sorry?
Everyone.
Okay. Another one is LED lighting, so right now, we use tube lights that are placed in here, so that's another option. Additionally, for Committee of the Whole, this was a suggestion, as everyone knows, the microphones in here tend to be a spaghetti mess and there's all sorts of wires and cords, so I've asked our IT team to take a look at low-profile mics that have concealed wiring and potentially restructuring the setup of the table so that we're more in a boardroom style. So, one of the big ones is paint, repainting the walls and trim just to get a matched appearance. You know, it doesn't necessarily require any structural change, but you've got a painter in here and you definitely get a major change to the look of the room. One component in the room that is never used, based on feedback I've heard, is the divider that exists in the middle, so removing that divider, it kind of gets in the way as staff is moving through the sides of the room. A very basic one that doesn't have much cost and thanks Mayor Gallo on the suggestion is adding screening on the windows in front of the bathrooms just for privacy's sake. So, the list- So, the, the list was included in the agenda packet. We're looking for feedback from the council as to whether or not the council's supportive of staff moving forward with, with requesting quotes on some of these improvements. If there are any that certainly are prioritized, or any that you just don't wish for us to look into, we won't, we won't proceed with those. Also noted in the, in the packet was some improvements for the 2:30 conference room, which is directly behind us. Right now, the walls in there are tack board walls, completely surrounding, and so either removal or drywall over that, and just paint, ceiling tiles, lighting, carpeting, so similar recommendations as for the council chambers, as well as adding a TV, so that if there are two meetings, which does happen from time to time, and this room is utilized, we can also utilize an additional conference room in the building. And then, last recommendation is the replacement of carpeting in the mayor's office, which gets a lot of sunlight, given its southern exposure, the carpeting is, is in pretty bad condition, so that was one additional recommendation, as we looked at all the carpeting in the building. So, the, the budget for FY '22 has $100,000 included, and so we're looking for council's direction, based on the feedback we received this evening, we'll go ahead and pull quotes, or not, and move forward accordingly. So, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. I appreciate you bringing this up, and thank you for calling me out. I like the idea of improvements to the space. What I'm not a fan of is the potential cost. I, I think that we can utilize money better than just aesthetic changes, but to the point about the windows, what I, for low costs, you can have a contact paper that's frosted, and you, we could apply that easily with, with having low-budget impact, and having effectiveness in terms of privacy, or what have you there. Anecdotally, with the mayor's office, I was surprised to see that on here. The couch that used to be in the mayor's office, I sat on the other day, I got up and my clothes were covered with the stain, the dye on the couch, and so it was actually rubbing off on anyone who would go sit on the couch. So, it's definitely aged, aged well. I did see Alderman Viziano with your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm happy that we, we were seeing this, we, I think we had this discussion, I want to say like, three years ago, I feel like, at this point, but what I didn't see in this proposal at all, was what I believe, some of what Chief Nowacki had some suggestions of, of doing some hardening in this room. And so, I was hoping that we would see some of those suggestions in here. I know they're more cosmetic, these are more cosmetic, but, so I, I'm just curious as to how that plays into this part of it.
There was, we did have a discussion last week in closed session, and because of the nature of those options, it was best to keep those in a closed session environment.
Okay, I apologize. I was out sick last week, so, okay, I'll follow up. Thank you.
Alderman Besessi.
One thing I would, I was, I was wondering what it would cost, it might be part of this, would be, when we have aldermen that are not able to attend, and stuff like that, if there was a way to do some kind of a, you know, almost like a Zoom, have them, have them up on a monitor and all that.
We, we currently are actually working on that. We, we have ordered the components, and it's in the works right now, supply chain, we're waiting on some of the hardware that allows us to do that, but you'll be able to see on the TVs once that gets installed.
Okay, because I know we had talked about that separately, I was just wondering if that was.
Yeah, let's move forward.
Okay.
Alderman McHale.
Well, I think like any remodel project that you do in your home, you get your list of what everything costs, and if you're going to go through with it or not. I think that you have a lot of great suggestions here. I did see one of them where I wouldn't have to, like, do something like this, sitting at this table, it is very uncomfortable. So, I think that getting all of the numbers, and then pulling off maybe some things that may not be completely necessary at the time, and to keep it within a, a reasonable monetary amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. So, with, with that, with that comment right there, what would, what would it require from, if council gave the green light to go ahead and pursue this, what, what would staff's next steps be in order to, to get that information? Would you have to hire an external source, or just make the list and do the pricing yourself?
We would do it internally, so our staff would probably divide and conquer, and identify, you know, is there someone that specializes in ceiling tiles? We would get painters' quotes, we'd get carpeting quotes. Identify three different quote options for each, assuming that there'll be larger expenses, but our intent is to do this amongst our, our existing staff, and not a contract out or find an outside source to do it for us.
Okay. And then, with that, you don't think that'll burn up a lot of time that could be prioritized better, or you feel that it's a good use of time, staff's time?
Well, the, we're here this evening, the, the questions we post to the council are, are prior to us doing that work, and if it's something the council desires us to go down the path of, then we will then allocate time, so that, that's the purpose for the tonight's meeting. If we aren't doing this work, certainly there's plenty of other work that we could be doing as well. There's no shortage of work in city government, as, as the council is aware, but we're, we're looking for that direction from the council as to whether or not to invest any of time towards that effort.
Okay. Alderman Sanoyka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, previously Alderman Viziano had brought up this topic from about three or two years ago, and I believe she's referring to a space assessment. Are these improvements in aligning with that space assessment, or other space assessments that we're making?
So, I, I, in consultation with our staff, there were, there was an evaluation done previously on the layout of the council chambers, and some recommendations to shift the location of the dais. There aren't any recommendations as far as structural changes to the room, most of these are primarily aesthetic, which the intent is ultimately reduce the cost. With some of the security improvements, we've taken a look at different options that exist to continue operating in the current layout, and so, yes, we've evaluated that. Our intent here was to look at aesthetic improvements that minimize or try to reduce the cost involved with this project.
I see, and the reason why I'm asking that is because if this is part of our long-term planning for all of our space assessments, then, then no question whatsoever, if this is something that has developed over time, I, I still agree with Alderman McHale that we would want to see it. I'm in support of making sure that we have, we have aesthetics to the point where it's not noticeable, but that said, if the cost ends up being far beyond what's budgeted, it's also very charming when municipal government is, is frozen in time sometimes, so, appreciate it.
Diplomatically stated. Alderman Besessi?
Never mind.
Okay. Alderman Bunnats, you have your hand up?
Yes, it appears that we've been frozen for a while. Just initial assessment. And so, seeing that this is the first room that some people see when they're developers, and this is the space where they're large enough to come, and we can all have a nice meeting, we probably need to make the room look a little bit more modern, if we're trying to attract current, cutting-edge businesses to Rolling Meadows, that, that we at least have a facility that looks slightly more modern than it currently looks. Seeing that we use this room several times a week, in comparison to the last discussion item, which we probably will use once every five years, I, I don't have difficulty in spending $100,000 for a room that we use three times or more per week. That's, that's just common sense.
Alderman Besessi, thank you.
Yeah, one of the things on the list, when you're going through trying to figure out the, the costs and everything like that, you mentioned the lighting and all of that, and I do know that lighting improvements in here, we could probably, you know, save some energy, be a little greener, that type of stuff, so I'd also like to see if there's any kind of a, you know, the trade-off on how, what kind of savings as well, we might get from, from an improvement like that.
So, the one, the one component, it would be a reduction in the amount of kilowatt-hours that we're burning. There wouldn't be a cost savings, because we don't pay for electric bills on the, on the City Hall facility under our ComEd franchise agreement. That said, though, there are, I, I don't know the current status, we'd have to look into it, there are grants from the state that offer LED upgrades within municipal facilities. We can take a look at those, if those are still available, and potentially utilize that as an option to fund lighting changes.
Yeah, because I've been, one of the things that I, I wanted to see is as we do any renovations or things within buildings, is that we do get, you know, greener and that on our, on our buildings.
Thank you, Alderman Besessi.
And ComEd does offer grants for businesses, and if they're paying the bill, I'm sure they'd like to see us have a lower bill.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on, on this? If not, then let's have a show of hands for direction on having staff move forward with sourcing, pricing quotes for modernizing this facility. Alderman O'Brien, how do you fare on this?
Yes, sir, I'm in agreement, I will review with all of the Bunnats, I'm in support with, based on the writing, and how often this year that we've been supported, at least getting quotes in front of us, yes, sir.
All right, so Alderman O'Brien's in favor, that's unanimous, and staff has direction. And that concludes this item. This will bring us on to the third item this evening, and again, Manager Sabo, back to you for the Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director position discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. The annual budget process involves a review of staffing and an analysis of current needs, as well as future needs. I know that the city council previously at a committee of the whole had reviewed a proposal on an Assistant City Manager position. After my arrival to the organization, I reviewed the past discussion and considerations, as well as what I perceive to be the current needs, and consulted with the staff team here, and, and put together a recommendation slightly different than what the council had previously seen at that last committee of the whole. And that proposal is to create a combined position, an Assistant City Manager slash Community Development Director. And that position would fill a current vacant position, so this is not creating or adding a new position to the full FTEs, the, the full-time equivalent positions in the city, rather, there's a vacancy that is budgeted and currently exists within the city budget, but is vacant. It's a Superintendent of Facilities position. That said, I, the proposal does not contemplate an increase in budget, fees, or taxes. It would utilize, as I mentioned, the personnel budget that is currently approved, and as well as that, that will be recommended for FY '23. As part of the recommendation as well, the current functioning interim superintendent of community development would become the Deputy Community Development Director with no change, it would just be a title change as well. The Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director position ultimately provides two things. It provides department direction for the Community Development Department, as well as providing for succession planning for my position. Not that I'm planning to go anywhere, and I hope that I'm here for many, many, many years to come. That said, we know things could happen, and so this position would, could potentially be able to step in and act if I were to be incapacitated or, or no longer here. One note I'd like to make that, is that this isn't a unique setup, the villages of Deerfield and Lincolnshire similarly have the same position, an Assistant City Manager, Village Manager slash Community Development Director. The agenda packet included a draft proposed job description. I'll hit a few highlights this evening for council's consideration, so the position on the admin side, will oversee a variety of different administrative functions, development of near and long-term vision and goals for the organization. We go through that exercise on an annual basis, and, and make recommendations to the council in that regard, as well as the implementation of policies, rules, and regulations, so these are high-level overarching rules and regs for the organization. One note I'd like to make is, as Alderman Besessi said, and I believe, or I know that Alderman Sanoyka's liaison to, but the staff liaison to the Environmental Commission is, or committee is one of the recommendations here, with sustainability becoming kind of a centralized, impacting all components of municipal operations approach, the assistant would oversee and work with the Environmental Committee to work on the sustainability plan, as well as the implementation, organization-wide, of sustainability initiatives. In addition, in order to make data-driven decisions, this position will help with performance metrics, as well as customer feedback, surveys, cost-benefit analysis, as well as program and service reviews, so that we can take and approach innovation, and really use data to help drive how we move forward with our operations. We also will, this position will also analyze and prepare contracts, ordinances, and resolutions in conjunction with our city attorney, work and assist in special events as, as time allows. And also, an important one that I'd like to highlight is human resources functions. Right now, many of our HR functions are decentralized. This position would help with some of the centralization and unified approach towards HR policies and implementation of different HR components for our organization. There are additional administrative rules and functions that are included in the job description, but those are some highlights. Shifting over to the community development side, this position would oversee the personnel aspects of community development, as well as the budget preparation and management. The position would oversee the zoning and land use planning processes for the, for the organization. So, the deputy director would be overseeing the day-to-day operations and staff. This position would oversee the overarching goals and functions of, of the department, and interact and, and make those changes as necessary to make sure that we're operating as effectively, efficiently, and in the best interests of our residents as possible, as well as supporting our businesses. The position works with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also would attend Economic Development Committee meetings on occasion as, as assigned. A big component that this position would be tasked with is focusing on the economic development and revitalization efforts. Given that we do anticipate some added traffic coming to our area, and are already planning for how that is going to impact us, this position will be certainly involved in evaluating the different components that come with economic development, whether that be working on incentive packages or development agreements, working on streetscape improvement plans as we evolve different business corridors, as well as evaluating the city's comprehensive plan and zoning based on how trends are revolving and what our needs are. This position would also facilitate and look for redevelopment opportunities, working with the property owners to potentially build better, more economically-driven projects that support the economic base of our community. At this time, I'm seeking council's support with including this position in the proposed FY '20-23 budget. Again, as I mentioned, it is not adding a new position, it is filling a current vacancy that is budgeted, re-titling that position, and, and moving it forward with recruitment starting in quarter four of 2022.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. I just want to say, I appreciate you putting this together the way you've done, you've incorporated many of the gaps that many on the city council have been highlighting for a long time that needed attention, and fostering a little bit more improvement. So, congratulations to you on capturing those. It's also no secret that this subject was somewhat contentious or controversial when trying to incorporate an Assistant City Manager who could focus on bigger-picture executive leadership, opportunities, responsibilities, while also tending to our Community Development Department, which is essentially the handshake to a lot of our residents, contractors, architects, engineers, business owners, right? And so, you've done a, a really good job with that. I just want to thank those members of the council who early on recognized the need for this role, and had the vision and the tenacity to make sure that, that we stuck to this subject, and encouraged Manager Sabo to bring it to the table, so thank you, and thank you guys.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the subject? Alderman Bunnats?
Thank you. After begging and urging and whatever else we had to do, your predecessor to do this, I, I couldn't, I could not even for a heartbeat not consider voting for this. We've, we've been waiting for this, and it's what the city's been needing for a long time, and, and so I'm thankful that you've laid it out as well as you have, and this is exactly what we need to move forward and have a sustainable plan in the unlikely event that something were to happen to you, and that there's a, an orderly transition, because the last orderly transition wasn't so orderly, and, and it was very difficult for the people who had to assume those roles, and, and, and so it was evident that, that it was totally necessary, and the council's, the council, the previous council's assessment was correct, that it was, that it was necessary, and so thank you for laying out this job description in this manner.
Thank you, Alderman Bunnats. Alderman Besessi?
Yeah, I'm one of those that, that initially was not necessarily in favor of the Assistant City Manager position. However, I strongly believe that we needed to hire a Community Development Director, because I felt that it just was not, we needed to split that function off, off of public work, so it could get the focus it needs, just to help our residents. So, I want to commend Alderman, or City Manager Sabo for presenting this idea. I think it's outstanding. I would, Alderman Bunnats, I can't see any reason I would ever not vote for this now.
Alderman Sanoyka?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I just wanted to talk about all of the different types of responsibilities that were listed here, and although it appears to be not sustainable and pretty significant as far as the workload goes, I just wanted to reiterate that I think that this will work because of the relationships between, for example, community development, and, and then leading a sustainability plan, which is recommended by the Environmental Committee, because so much of what goes into zoning and community development also can then roll right into that plan, so if anything, I think it's actually more efficient that all of these are, are wrapped in together. So, as the mayor had stated, a lot of these, a lot of these requirements that are listed in the posting are exactly what the city of Rolling Meadows needs at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Positive feedback loop. Positive feedback loop. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was one of those that took a lot of bats at this for the Assistant City Manager position and explaining to residents why we needed this so badly. And I truly believe that we need this as a community. We were lacking in so many areas that just were not being fulfilled, and one of them being community development, being told that from residents and inside employees themselves. And so I am so excited that these two positions are going to be combined and kind of merged together. They really do mirror each other and complement each other very well. So I really appreciate all your hard work and thought. I know we were really anxious to get this position out there, but I'm glad that you took your time to really put it together correctly. I'm really excited to see this kind of come to fruition and see what comes from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it's Kevin.
Yep.
Thanks. No, I would just want to kudos to Manager Sabo too, as I was clear about if there was any miss in that, that I was opposed to it strictly before with how it was presented and things like that, but no, huge kudos. Thanks for taking the time to do that. I know it was obviously very contentious, as some of my peers have mentioned, but the way of combining roles, being in for about six months, no, not just, almost six months, and seeing where the need, where the gaps were and being able to keep not an increase in headcount or budget, that I do support with how you drafted. So thanks for taking the time to do that and laying out in a clear manner of all the roles and efficiencies we'll be able to have by this. So I am in support of how it is now going forward. So thank you very much for that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. All right, so a quick show of hands for all those in favor of having City Manager Sabo move forward with this. It's unanimous. Green light.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your comments this evening as well.
Well, I think that can move us on to the fourth and final item. Again, Manager Sabo, with the municipal aggregation program.
Yes, so this will be a quick presentation, a little bit of background. A little bit of background for those who may not necessarily be familiar with this because it does not come up very often. Back in March of 2012, there was a referendum that was on the ballot and was approved by Rolling Meadows voters that allowed the city to operate a opt-out electric aggregation program. What that means is that the city of Rolling Meadows procures the electricity supply, which is one portion of your COMED bill, on behalf of residential and small businesses, typically those that are 10,000 kilowatt-hours per year or less. The electric aggregation programs rolled out widely in the Chicagoland area with the intent of providing cost savings as well as stability in a fluctuating electric market versus what COMED's electric supply rates are. One additional component of electric supply is that it does allow municipalities, if they so choose, to purchase 100% renewable energy, like, energy supply. So that would be solar or wind or any other alternative energy. But one caveat that comes with that is typically those are more, those packages are more expensive than your standard mix, which would include whatever typically you would find with a COMED standard mix from coal to nuclear to the other electric. With electricity supply, the municipality is responsible, as I said, for negotiating that price from the supplier to provide alternative supply. COMED still delivers the electricity to your property. This is one question that comes up frequently is, you know, will an alternative supplier mean that COMED's not my electric provider? And that's not the case. COMED still is, in the northern Illinois region, for the exception of a couple small municipal utilities, the electric utility for the residents and businesses of Rolling Meadows. The supplier, the way the transaction works is the supplier is simply providing COMED's electric grid with the electricity that it uses and distributes and provides to all of its customers. Under state law, COMED can't profit from electric supply, so the portion of the COMED bill that COMED is providing is a pass-through of what their cost of supply is. Where COMED is making their revenue, excuse me, their profit is off of the transmission and distribution. So essentially, the high-voltage power lines, the major electric transmission centers, and the infrastructure that delivers electricity to our properties. This is a diagram. It's from the Citizens Utility Board, but it essentially shows how the flow of your electricity is and what the difference is. The main difference you'll see is the electricity supply and cost section, where you see COMED and AMERIN. AMERIN is the electric provider for areas in the south. Typically, if you're on traditional electric service with COMED, COMED and AMERIN are negotiating and obtaining electric supply on behalf of their customers. If you are on the municipal aggregation, the community is negotiating and seeking out alternative supply on behalf of its residents and small businesses that qualify. And so jumping into the next slide here, it's kind of hard to see, and I wish my mouse could show it. The bill in the middle section where you see the circle, on the left side is where you see the supply portion of the bill. That is the portion that electric supply impacts, electric aggregation. Again, that number, if you are on, see how on the bottom it says COMED provides your energy? If you have COMED's supply, COMED is simply passing through their cost of that supply. If you are on an alternative supplier, rather than seeing COMED provides your energy, what you'll see is whatever the supplier's name is, so in Rolling Meadows, we currently have a contract with Home Field Energy or Dynagee, and the number there is based on what the negotiated rate of the municipal supply contract is. On the right side of the circle is where the delivery fees are, and that's where COMED makes their money. It's on the delivery and infrastructure. And so that's how the bills break up. But you're all still getting your bill from COMED. So under an aggregation program, the only thing that changes, as I mentioned, is who's providing the supply to COMED, as well as the rate. So why are we bringing this up this evening? There's a three-year contract that the city has with Home Field Energy slash Dynagee that expires in December of 2022. Year-to-date savings over the course of the now two and three-quarters of the year, or two and a half-year cycle, has been about a $1.67 million savings across all eligible accounts. So the good news is that this has been a successful program for the community. If you take a look at the current COMED price to compare that, PTC as I've abbreviated, it's right now set at 11.377 cents per kilowatt-hour, and there's a purchased energy adjustment of half a cent up or down each month depending on what COMED's cost of their electricity is. Our program rate that we're currently in is 6.9 cents per kilowatt-hour. So you'll see that there's, right now, based on COMED's current rate, a 61% savings or 4.477 cents per kilowatt-hour. This graph, it's a chart that's really hard to see, so I apologize for the way it represents. But the one thing that, the reason I brought this up is that while, the way that the city's aggregation contract works is that if you see the column that says program rate, you'll see 6.9 is consistent throughout that entire chart. However, if you look at the left side where it says residential non-space heat, those numbers change over time. Looking at the top of the chart, you'll see where we're at currently, which is that 11.041, which is essentially 11 cents per kilowatt-hour. And there was a major jump, as was reported in the news, in COMED's supply rate based on the energy markets and where they're at currently. Given that we're coming up to the end of our current contract, we have obtained indicative pricing, and this is simply just going out and saying, if we were to get a bid right now, what would those numbers come back with? And based on the pricing that has been provided, we requested a 12, 24, 36, or 48-month term. The length of the term is really kind of a risk comfort level. You know, you lock in the term and then hope that COMED will continue to be below your rate for the length of your term. If we were to go with a 12-month term based on indicative pricing right now, COMED's rate is 11 cents per kilowatt-hour. The proposed amount that we got indicative is 8.98 cents per kilowatt-hour for an approximate savings of 19%. That's on a 12-year, excuse me, a 12-month contract. If you were to go to a 21, a 24-month contract, you then go up to a 21% savings. On a 36-month contract, there's a 23% savings. So I've calculated out the average savings, if we were to take an average home utilizing 8,000 kilowatt-hours per year over 12 months, would save approximately $164 on electric supply. And so looking for council's direction at this time, the process for electric aggregation is for, if the council supports us moving forward and obtaining formal quotes, we will then go out to the market and formalize those indicative pricing. The prices change daily, not by huge amounts, but if you catch the wrong day, you may spike. And so we work with a contractor who then will go out and pull all of those pricing quotes on our behalf. So we're looking for direction and support from the council if there is desire to continue with an electric aggregation program for the city. With that also, the question for the council as well is, does the council desire for us to obtain quotes for 100% renewable energy or stick with the standard supply mix? Again, the question is, I bring the question because the 100% renewable does bring a higher cost associated with it. Lastly, one other question, and this is part of our, when we do put together our quotes, municipalities typically will include a point, one-tenth of a penny per kilowatt-hour on the supply rate. Residents would continue to experience supply savings, but this can be utilized in a number of communities. You do so for sustainability projects or can go into general revenue to offset the expenses of operating the program. So we're seeking council's support this evening to obtain and go ahead with proceeding with the formal quoting process and then looking for direction on, should we get 100% renewable quotes or not? And lastly, should we include the one-tenth of a penny fee that would come through on the municipal revenue side?
Thank you, Manager Sabo. I know I don't necessarily get a vote on this, but you have my full support in terms of providing an aggregate program back to the residents. I also am in favor of that one cent or percent of a cent back to the city of Rolling Meadows. I think it's a fairly easy revenue stream for the city that is not a large burden on the residents. About a month or so back, Manager Sabo and I, we're having this conversation because we know that utility rates are increasing. Illinois currently does not have any laws in place for natural gas aggregate programs. So I was working with Nikor and Senator Gillespie, trying to understand what information we can provide to our residents in order for individuals to leverage natural gas, flexible pricing, to help relieve their households. But to that point, when it comes to electric utility aggregation, I believe that we should provide this for our residents, and they can opt-in if they, if they want to, and they can recognize savings. And if they're not comfortable with it, they don't have to, and that's their prerogative. But I feel that we should provide this to our residents. You look like you have your hand up.
I do, I have a question. I'm not well-educated in these renewable energies and whatnot. So what is the difference between the electric supply mix or the 100% renewable? When you're saying it costs more money, what, what is it?
So the standard electric supply mix includes what you would call more of your fossil-fuel types of supply. So there still are coal-burning power plants in the state as well as around us that supply energy. So your standard mix includes different sources, which would be coal-powered, some renewable, but not 100%, as well as nuclear, which is technically in a more sustainable, sustainably-friendly energy source. The 100% renewable is your wind-powered, solar-powered, which typically the infrastructure costs lead to a higher expense. Because a lot of that infrastructure is newly built, a lot of the contractors who've built them are looking for returns on their investment, which has resulted in a larger cost on renewable energy procurement. So that's, that's really the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Besessi and Budmets?
Yeah. I'm totally in favor of this. It would kind of be nice to see what a quote for the renewable would be, just to see how much more expensive that might be. So, so I would be in favor of getting a quote on that at least. It doesn't mean we have to take it, but at least, so we can see what it is. That's it.
Okay. Alderman Budmets?
So question, I don't see that we have an option to not get this priced out because by referendum, the voters already asked us to do it, right?
Yeah, the voters allowed the municipality to do it. The council has the ability to decide whether or not to move forward with it.
Okay. And then I think there's no reason not to get a price for renewable energy, and then we can assess that, that cost and then make a decision based on the numbers once they're forward. And I'm assuming that we're getting multiple prices, not just whatever best, good energy is?
Correct. So there's, we've gotten indicative pricing from three vendors so far, Constellation, Energy, Home Field, and Energy Harbor. I've also asked the contractor to reach out to MC Square, which is another contractor that performs a service for a number of municipalities as well.
And the program currently is, you have to opt-out, correct?
If you don't want to participate, you have to opt-out. You otherwise are automatically rolled into it. Everyone will get a letter that provides all the details about it, as well as where to contact if a resident chooses not to participate in the program.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to that point about having to physically opt-out of the program, if residents miss that opportunity, they recognize savings, and there's, there's no significant or physical difference to the electricity entering your home and the usage. So we haven't experienced any, any negative feedback when we started the program before. My question, back to you, Manager Sabo, from council direction, do you need us to pick a specific duration of contract time? Or are you going to be able to provide the council with rates for a 12-month, 24-month, and 36-month, 48-month, and so on? Are you going to provide all of those through this contact?
Yes. Yeah, we can provide the entire, the entire options. We can leave a blank in the section of the resolution that ultimately can be filled in based on the council's ultimate direction and decision.
Okay. Alderman Sanoyka and then Beniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some of my colleagues have been asking for some additional pricing if we were to go with the non-conventional, I'm sorry, what was the, can you go back?
100% renewable.
Thank you, for the 100% renewable. As we're going through that pricing, if we can maybe apply some natural resource economics by stating what the cost would be if we were to go with the standard electric supply mix, since much of it is with coal versus nuclear, and how many organizations are being required to then offset that carbon on the, on the marketplace? And so because those costs are increasing, if that was an option for us later on, we might have significant savings by choosing 100% renewable for the community. So I just wanted to make sure that when that information is provided to us, that there is some consideration as to what that cost might be in the future, so that way the council can compare apples to apples. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification? So just to make sure I'm providing the right information, are you, are you looking for what, like a renewable energy credit or rec would cost if we were to go with a standard mix or?
Yes, that's correct, yes. So currently, if we were to go into the carbon offset market and buy those recs, then what would that be?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Beniziano?
So I know that when we switched, or when the community switched, whatever, what, three years ago, there was a lot of misunderstanding within the community. Who's my supplier? Why did this switch? I know that was on the referendum, but our voting turnout is very low. So I just want to ask that, I know we, there's one letter sent out to opt-out. However, if we can get information in our newsletter, because I know this is very confusing to customers, like, I thought COMED was my energy company. It just gets very confusing. I think that would help with some of the residents, like, understand what's going on.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll definitely communicate this heavily.
Thank you.
We did discuss having resources on our website for those who would want to source this information from a website versus mailers in our water utility bill. Any other questions or comments? Do have a quick question here for, so you'll provide us a list of rates for those durations of time? In addition to that, you'll provide us the renewable energy prices respective to apples to apples, or the traditional? And so all those in favor of having Manager Sabo bring that back to the City Council, please raise your hands. I have a second vote after this. Alderman O'Brien, are you in favor of, of Manager Sabo collecting this information and bringing it to the council?
Yes, sure I am.
Okay, thank you. And then the next step is, those who are in favor of the city also exploring that tenth of a penny tax, those in favor. Alderman O'Brien, are you in favor?
I would be, yes. Very satisfied with your information provided. Thank you.
Yep, so that's unanimous on both of those. We look forward to getting this information in the near future.
Yep, we'll get to work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that subject? If not, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Besessi. Thank you, Alderman Budmets. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Be ayes all have it. It's 8:56, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
I'm not the one that's done, the one that's stalled.